Yeah, hopefully they'll have a good year.
Better than thick.
Yeah.
I just pulled in.
I went up outside of Madison.
I can endorse it. I'm sure my mom down. She's sitting there and went to leave. So water come. And I saw your shit. And turn up. Look up the street.
I mean, they do a good job.
Started one on the ground. And it just happened. A lot of leaking. Just for.
Go back.
I was gonna ask.
No, I got it.
One neighbor had water.
I know.
But they never could find it. They didn't know if it was their line or if it was mine. Yeah, water coming out of the wall. You know, I live on the alley.
It doesn't work.
Their house.
That's a cell phone.
Yes.
This is progress.
They come in, they get me cut down here today when I wasn't getting emails and we back at me. Trying to figure it out. A little bit of water. Yeah, they get it fixed. They cast it, sure enough, all right, water. Well, so they called us to dig it. It's like taking two waters.
Ready?
Yeah, I hope so. Sure enough, there's a water. So much, so much rock on that street. We're just going down.
We don't have to, we're just going up the first. Sorry. You know. This is going up. Usually do the second door first. Yes.
It happens.
Then we go, anybody on the hall. Then anybody who's a.
It's coming higher from iron.
Then we give the app. It could be a wall. But whatever. And we give the other people the answer.
That's like winter time thing.
I'm with Mark when you're on the same way, but. Very bad.
Yeah.
You guys.
Actually, I would have grass. Cause you could follow it. Sixty feet up there. Yeah.
Yeah.
You were trying to. You're. Wait, you're really. Is what you chance for fire hiders.
Well, they have what they put on the ground too, if I think so.
Okay.
Like, it's like. But what's happening? They could tell them.
Okay.
And. That's one of the.
I'll be different.
Those at all. And you're in some sort of. Position. Maybe. Yes. It's like that.
And I don't know.
You said the. There's all. There you go, rocket science.
Presentation.
Yeah. Can't use that stick. I saw it's broken.
Like a video. You know, get one like this. You know, wires. And you can go across and they will turn.
The most. Well, they will.
Yeah, you can.
I saw him do it.
Yeah, you can find it. Yeah. He's two wires. The whole wires. Send them over. Into an alley.
Yeah.
Walk ahead like that. And don't. Don't move them in there. They'll magnetic produce somehow. All together.
When they find water.
Well, when I would. Trying to ask.
Oh.
Water. I drink it again. It's trying to. Yeah, you know, quite a lot.
Yeah.
Oh. Something about it's wired by everything. Well, she said, we'll run up to your house.
Oh. I need four guys to come. If they want to be really. I stay here all this time. I'm wrong.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
I do. Mike, come on my show. How are you?
What did you say?
Open the mic up. Very.
African people.
I was kind of afraid to ask for water. Have you been going around right?
Quickly, the people that are in attendance tonight, we do have a public hearing. And if you're going to speak at the public hearing, we would like to have you sign your name and address up here. So we can call upon you if maybe or. Trust you when you approach a podium, so. This is for the. Annexation on the amendment to the. Glina and. City of Glina and the True North Quality Homes LLC. In regards to annexing and adding eighteen acres to the planned unit development plan of theirs. So whoever wants to talk during that meeting, just sign it. Put down your address and stuff.
Okay.
You can just get up and. Talk. At the public, it's easy to kind of talk.
Yeah, there's no public hearing on here. Oh. We have a citizen's comment section, but we will have an open public. Yeah. During the citizens' comment, you can talk.
Yes, I do. Don't show. Somebody I like to check it that out. People can't see. Same as mine. I have to look at this. She said it's. She said there.
Okay. Let's call the regular city council meeting to order for the city of Glina, Glina, Illinois, Monday, November fourteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Here. Here.
Boy.
Here. Here.
Yeah.
Here, we have a quorum. Next is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move ahead to item number twenty-two, C. Day zero, four, two, six. Reports of standing committees. We have nothing tonight. Move ahead then to item number twenty-two, C. Day zero, four, two, seven. Citizens' comments, they're not to exceed fifteen minutes as an agenda item and not more than three minutes per speaker. So if you have one to step up to the podium and. Tonight, just state your name and address.
Barb Hocker, six oh six Dewey Avenue. And on behalf of the Glina Area Chamber Board of Directors, I'd like to thank all of you for the Halloween parade and success this year. I appreciate all the time Mark and Rand and Eric capable. The founder days to attend meetings and to make this as seamless as possible. The city crew was very supportive. Attention to detail was unmatched. We did have some last minute challenges, but nothing we can't correct for the future. I appreciate the city council and you mayor Renner for your continued support of the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Yeah. Good job on the change. Anybody else just wish you to address the council? Okay, I do not see anything at this time. Let's move ahead then. All right. Public hearings coming up and anybody who signed the sign and signed and chief. Joey, you want to. Swear amendment. Anybody who's going to testify in favor of or against the public hearing, please raise your right hand. I'm still the truth, the whole truth and that's about the truth. Thank you.
This.
No, I don't. Okay, let's move ahead on the public hearing, item number twenty-two, C. Day zero, four, two, eight. Public hearing on a proposed amendment to an annexation agreement between the city of Glina and True North Quality Homes LLC. Are there grantees, heirs, assessors or assignees dated May eleventh of twenty twenty-two to annex and add eighteen point two, three, nine acres to the planned unit development plan? Now, do I have a motion of public hearing? Or person mark here.
I'll make a motion and open the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, it's been. Motion made in second open public hearing, take the role on that. My best.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
West Meyer.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. So this time, we usually start with the applicants. Are people in favor of it to speak first? If you want to go ahead and speak first, go ahead.
My name is Jim Belansky at ten fifteen South Bench. Let's say appreciate you considering the amendment, any annexation tonight. And we are here if there are any questions.
Is there anybody at this time? Also, would like to speak that's in favor of. Okay, at this time, let's go to the people that are opposed to it, this agenda item, just step up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Kathleen Webster and I live at twenty-one seventy North Blackjack Road, also known as Three Letter Drive Street. I wrote this down so I wouldn't digress, okay? But so you don't have to read along with me if you got it, if you need it. Last November, we were invited to a neighbors meeting by Jim Bransky, the architect of the Parkers. There we met with developer Dave Putin and a few members of his family. We haven't seen or talked to any of the people since then. We were pleased to learn someone was going to restore the Marine Hospital. Then the other shoe dropped. Restoring the hospital and turning it into an executive retreat and residence for the owner with the possibility of a cafe lounge guest rooms and some kind of display area honoring Eli Parker, Ascenica, Algonquin Indian, West Point graduate. Civil engineer and member of General Grant's cabinet. Proposal includes building three hundred tourist cottages, beginning with one hundred white platform tree houses on stilts arranged along geologic benches along the north and west sides of the property with windows overlooking our homes and yards. Remaining two hundred cottages would be built later with sizes, designs and locations to be determined. Other plans included a wedding gazebo, a large event center for meetings and parties, several cafes, outdoor entertainment and music venues. The plan also showed flower gardens, walking trails, vineyards, a working winery, petting zoo, a few miniature silo style cottages, a zip line swimming pool spa and a guest parking lot for three hundred cars plus maintenance buildings and an employee parking lot. The entire development would be serviced by a continuous twenty-four hour guest shuttle service to and from other area sites and attractions. The entire development will be connected by city and water and sewer. Nearby residences have wells and septic systems. And we've never been offered the opportunity to have anything else. And our sewage plant, which can't handle baby wipes, handle six hundred to one thousand more people flushing, bathing, swimming, dining and making a line. I don't know what they're going to do at the skins and the seeds. Primary access roads are still being discussed, including the fact that the two intersections with Highway twenty at Blackjack Road, Fourth Street and Third Street have been classified as dangerous by I D. And changing the primary entrance to just a little farther east isn't going to change the traffic at those two intersections. And lately, we've had a parade of grain trucks going by our house all day and all night. And they don't turn on Fourth Street, they turn on Third Street. I don't know how they make that corner either, but. Interesting. There's problems. This project will have a major negative impact on the quality of life in the adjacent southeast corner of Glina. Our property values will drop. It does not comply with the city's comprehensive plan. And if you don't like the comprehensive plan, change it. But until then, you should follow it. The entire development will be connected to city water and sewer. And we still won't have it. Primary access roads are still being discussed, including the fact that the two intersections with Highway twenty at Blackjack Road and Fourth Street and Third Street have been classified as dangerous by I D. There is a severe shortage of entry level employees in the area as well as affordable housing for those employees. I talked to a young woman the other day who lives downtown. She's an entry level employee. She didn't tell me what her rent was, but she did tell me that she pays two hundred and fifty dollars a month for us parking space near her apartment building on Main Street. Glina's strength is its unique historic and authentic atmosphere and its people, even though I didn't put that here. More development, especially the wrong kind of development, will endanger Glina's reputation as a great place to visit, work, live and raise a family. There are dozens of Wisconsin Dells around. There are dozens of ransoms. There's only one Glina.
Irving Berry, nineteen seventy-four, Blackjack Road. I object to the annexation agreement. Anex eighteen point two, three, nine acres to the planned unit development adjoining my property. Zoning board told those of us who are opposed to the Parker development that we don't understand the nature of progress and what Glina needs in order to prosper. But we do not understand economic growth and progress, that the tourists are bored and want new things to do. However, although I believe tourism is important to Glina, I think safety is much more important. I think there's a reason why there is a sign coming towards Glina and Third Street that says dangerous intersection. I think there's a reason why I dot, I, the Fourth Street intersection is the highest category of dangerous intersection in the state. Driveway access road that the developer wants to use is as steep as mountain roads I've been on and I have walked up to the. Several places myself. I, a man was killed in the driveway in a farm tractor accident about fifteen years ago. He went up and down it every day. And there was nobody coming up or down. Blackjack Road in that area has a little cement bridge over the creek, which is, the creek's on both sides of the road. About least two accidents that I can remember, I think probably more than that, but I remember two. There is no room for a turning one. Now, if we add more than six hundred cars for the convention center, one hundred and forty-five cars for the cabins, two hundred for the restaurant, et cetera. People drinking at the bars and restaurants up there, added to the normal traffic of semis and grain trucks. I think I saw. Seven or eight of them go by my house today. Large farm equipment, I saw at least six of those. Semis with two hundred thousand pound hay bales, speeders, motorcycles and cattle will wander up and down the access road or driveway. What could possibly go wrong?
Thank you.
Lenny Clark, eleven oh seven Fourth Street, Glina. First, I want to say that I'm here in the same capacity as everyone else tonight, just as a resident and an owner of property adjoining the Parker development. Here to provide my testimony and evidence about the proposed annexation and the amended plan that goes with it. For starters, I want to ask a basic question. If the purpose of the added eighteen acres is to add a road and to grow graves, why does that need to be annexed into the city? Each five of the application says that it will be on city water and sewer, but it doesn't say for what purpose. That page also notes that development unlimited ag is to be restricted until services can be provided. So if they're providing those services, what is the purpose? And is that to allow for some future development? Is that why the applicant would like to have it included in the PUD since the PUD is not otherwise needed for the stated uses on that parcel? Also, the application is clear that the eighteen acres is to remain a separate parcel. So that means it'll be taxed separately, presumably as ag, although I don't understand property taxes well enough to know for sure, but its purpose is to be agriculture. Will that ag based tax revenue offset the cost of maintaining those city services? There's a lot of other questions, but those need to be answered before you approve a legally binding contract to expand the city limits, just to include a relevance of venues. Section four point one of the draft agreement states that the city shall approve the preliminary PUD plan. Shall approve means you have no choice. You will be legally bound to approve the PUD plan, which you're set to consider tonight as well. Why does that matter? One reason is the lack of complete and final documentation of zoning board proceedings. You have with you a signed memo from the zoning administrator regarding the zoning board's recommendation. But the minutes that document several hours of testimony and evidence deliberation and decision won't, as I understand, be final until December fourteenth at the earliest. Those minutes include detailed statements by the applicants, while testimony of the objectors is only briefly summarized. And it does not include information that some of us were unable to present when told that there is apparently a policy that allows applicants but not objectors to use PowerPoint presentations. Maybe that information would once again fail to persuade you. But you should at least have the opportunity to give equal consideration to everything presented before you approve an agreement that requires you to enshrine as law the outcome of that meeting. Section four point one also says you shall approve the plan for the addition of property. What exactly does this mean regarding what was recommended and what you'll be required to approve? The zoning board voted to recommend approval of, quote, "the request for an amendment to the PUD plan to add an additional eighteen point two four acres upon annexation to the state." What that says to me is that it recommends the amendment to add the acreage. But it isn't clear that it includes the other changes in the proposal for the existing PUD. There appear to be two separate actions being considered in it. Rezoning a newly added parcel, assuming you will quote added, and amending some features of an existing PUD, all put together in the same application and vote. The city attorney on November ninth instructed the zoning board to consider the effect on the entire PUD. Although the draft minutes that you have state that he advised them to consider the entire PUD, either of which is entirely clear in its purpose. Amendments provide specific changes to something. They don't reapprove the entire thing. So as a very simplistic example, when the constitution is amended, the whole thing isn't reapproved. Only the specific changes that are documented in the amendment. Unfortunately, this application, recommendation, minutes and instructions are inconsistent and unclear as to what you're considering for approval tonight, which could lead to problems in the future. This may just be an issue of needing to find better, more precise words to describe those official actions. It may also be an issue of rushing too many actions into too short of a timeframe. Either way, specific and precise wording matters when approving things that become legal contracts as this draft annexation agreement will. The annexation will require you to rezone to a PUD, which, as you know, creates an entirely new zoning district. Descriptions of zoning districts must be clearly and explicitly stated so that everyone knows during review and construction of all future phases, what is or isn't allowed. Both the original and the amendment plan failed to ensure that all the proposed uses are addressed. Some of them aren't mentioned at all, such as the winery and the wine making operation. We've been told that that's okay, all the details will be provided in the final plans. But that's not when the city has chosen to finalize the ordinances. And the ordinances require that level of detail. City code one, five, four, three, oh, one, F two, A and B provide direction for two routes through the PUD process. But they both state that should the city council find that a preliminary plan lacks sufficient detail to ensure that future development will be of the intensity and quality proposed. It may defer action on the PUD zoning ordinance until the final stage. Given the lack of specific information in the plans, it would be smart for the city council to do that, to defer action on both the annexation and the rezoning that it requires due to approve. Because the latter currently lacks that sufficient detail. Per one, five, four, three, oh, one, A, a PUD is to be used only when long term community benefits will be derived as a result of the planned development. And per one, five, four, three, oh, one, D five, in order to approve deviations from the underlying district, which is what a PUD is all about. Certain listed amenities must also be provided. In other words, a proposal might be given permission to flex the usual rules, that's what a PUD does, but only if it provides certain specific public benefits. Those ordinances state what benefits are to be derived, but the application does not correctly or adequately address them. I will briefly discuss only two of those. The rest are in my testimony and handouts that are in the November ninth hearing, if those are available to you. I'm not sure if they are. One, in order to use a PUD, the plan must demonstrate whether it provides more efficient infrastructure. And this does not. Instead, it requires addition to the city of complex, difficult to maintain and therefore costly infrastructure. It's also unclear why that infrastructure is to be extended to the eighteen acres as stated in the application. And considering it isn't even available to several adjoining landowners who are already within the city limits. The second thing is that a request to use a PUD is to be allowed only if it reduces traffic demands. Clearly, this project will make increased traffic demands. Now, I know you've heard a lot about this and that I have a couple of new questions and pieces of information that haven't been talked about yet, so. The project will add to traffic demands in a part of the city without the streets and sidewalks to handle it. As you've already heard, third arrives are narrow and they don't have sidewalks and they're already dangerous because trucks and traffics come through to avoid the problems with visibility and turning radius at Fourth Street and Highway twenty. I personally have had to literally dive out of the way a couple of times when somebody's come and through there. Would delivery and service truck traffic to and from the Parker be allowed to do the same, significantly adding to the danger on those small residential streets? In a March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two email to the applicant that was also sent to the city. The county engineer stated in reference to the access off Blackjack that, quote, "for all intents and purposes, a roadway is being constructed." He's talking about the access road that goes to the resort. That will potentially carry more traffic than many of the public roadways in the county. More traffic than many roads in the county just on the one access road. The county engineer's email also requested analysis of impacts to the highway, Highway twenty and Fourth Street intersection, based on the county's and I D's concerns about the impacts there. That is explained in an October fourth, twenty twenty-two email by the city administrator. The city has not done so, quote, "because the zoning ordinance does not specifically require." In other words, we didn't do it because we don't have to. In two thousand and six, the Glina bypass final environmental impact statement was published. It's not super current, but it has a wealth of really useful, relevant information. The section in there titled "System Capacity" used data on commuter, household and transport traffic and concluded that the highway section through Glina, including the intersections at Third, Fourth and Blue Failure Streets where they want to run the shuttle. Is already above its design and safety capacity and was at the time in two thousand and six when that study was published. Other data in that impact statement show that the level of service rating, it's an official rating, for that same section was in the second lowest category in two thousand and six. And was projected to be the lowest, which is F. Low breakdown, demand exceeds capacity by twenty twenty. That's why the bypass was proposed. That's why the bypass was proposed. So we may not be able to control the load on Highway twenty, but why would we deliberately make it worse? As an example, many of us live in old houses with old wiring. If you have to plug your dishwasher and your microwave into the same outlet, and if sometimes that causes the circuit breaker to pop, do you add an extension cord and plug the toaster and coffee maker into that outlet too? Not without risking a breakdown of the system, or worse, a house fire, a situation in which people get hurt or killed. I firmly believe that it is entirely unacceptable for a governing body to knowingly create through its decisions a significant public safety risk. Moving on, one five four three oh one E, as I mentioned before, requires that deviations from an underlying, underlying PUD, in a PUD from the underlying district are only to be allowed when certain listed community amenities are provided and only if those exceed what the underlying district would provide itself. Solicited amenities in the code include such things as public trails, bus shelters, community facilities like boat launches, or community hall, et cetera, things that provide sufficient community benefit. Deviations allowed for the preliminary Parker Plan, oversized buildings, outdoor entertainment, and others don't provide or even contribute to community benefits. Deviations requested in the annexation agreement and amendment being considered tonight include such things as signage by rights, but what community benefit does that provide or contribute to? Either the approved preliminary PUD nor the proposed amendment conform to the requirements of that ordinance. Because annexation requires rezoning, part of your review includes considering whether any benefits would outweigh the harm done to the community and to adjoining property owners. In addition to the traffic safety already mentioned, the harm includes, but is not limited to diverting visitors from established lodging and likely from restaurant businesses, as demonstrated and supported by recently available data that was presented last Wednesday and has been published in the Gazette. Increased risk of flooding due to runoff. Despite what were thought to be adequate engineering plans, the designed runoff systems above us on Third, Rives, Blackjack, and Highway twenty are in fact not adequate. The county has to try to keep Blackjack from washing out during every hard rainfall as a result of runoff from the Highway twenty businesses that have been built. Some adjoining property owners, despite installing greened structures at significant personal expense, continue to be flooded by runoff from nearby streets and development. It's simply not worth the risk of adding to this, as there is no capacity left in the Davis Creek Bottom. Decreasing property values. We've been advised by an experienced area realtor that our property values will go down, at least during the construction phase, which apparently could last ten years or more. The zoning board member stated last week that the inflated price paid for the Parker land would also increase our property values, but that's an incorrect comparison. That farmland was purchased as empty space to develop with expectations that it could be annexed and rezoned to suit those plans. Our properties are already in the city and are zoned as residential with existing homes on them, many of them historic. Any realtor or fraser can tell you that isn't the same thing. The value of residential property that becomes encroached on by commercial development decreases, unless the property is rezoned and converted to commercial use, as we've seen up on the west side of Highway twenty. Is that what we want? An entire neighborhood of some of the oldest homes in Galena turned into a commercial district? On November ninth, the city attorney asked the zoning board to comment on whether the project as a whole has benefits greater than negatives or the reverse. The draft minutes show that the substantive testimony and fact-based information provided by the public was not discussed and/or not accurately referred to in their statements, and instead, they relied on personal opinion and unsupported speculation. It was also unclear exactly what that exercise was intended to address if they were only making a recommendation about the added parcel and specified changes to the original plan, i.e. an amendment. The zoning ordinances are clear. Rezoning and annexation can occur only when in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Galena City Code thirty-three point two five to thirty-three point two seven established a planning commission. The code also referenced the Illinois Municipal Code, and I don't know how to read the citation properly, but I can get it to you if you wanted some of the code. But that states that the planning commission has the power to, quote, "prepare and recommend to corporate authorities a comprehensive plan for the present and future development of your municipality." The state code also states that the comprehensive plan may be implemented by ordinances that include designating, quote, "land suitable for annexation" and the recommended zoning classification to put on that land. The city made that designation on the proposed land use map that was adopted by the city via ordinance one five six point oh one F. Per state law, that land use map identifies contiguous growth areas as the land suitable for annexation, and it identifies appropriate zoning of those areas. The application and the zoning administrator memo state that the Parker Development parcels, including the one under consideration for annexation tonight, are, quote, "directly adjacent" to one or more of the contiguous growth areas. If I am driving in the left lane across a double yellow line, I am directly adjacent to the lane identified as appropriate for my direction of travel, but I'm still not actually in it, and therefore I'm not in conformance with the goals. Putting in a development in annexed area next to the contiguous growth areas that are incidentally identified for entirely different uses does not conform with the plan or its implementing ordinance. There's been discussion about the comprehensive plan as a flexible document that should be changed periodically, and that is correct. However, section twelve point four point six of that plan states, "Large-scale changes or frequent amendments to meet individual development proposals should be avoided or the plan loses integrity and becomes meaningless." It goes on to say, "To follow state comprehensive planning law, the city should use the same process to amend the plan as when it was initially adopted, regardless of how minor the amendment or change." The proposed annexation and rezoning aren't even attempting to amend the plan. They're simply ignoring it. The comprehensive plan is meant to change and be flexible, but changes are to be made under the auspices of a planning commission and following the established process, not simply to accommodate every individual development proposition that comes along. So, there's no compelling reason to annex the added eighteen acres because, first, there is question about whether it will, as ag land, provide sufficient tax revenue to offset the costs of maintaining the proposed infrastructure and services. Second, the agreement requires you to approve the proposed plan and rezoning to a PUD, but the proposed uses do not conform to the requirements for use of a PUD, nor do those uses require annexation into the city limits. Three, the plan you will be required to approve does not include enough information to create an ordinance that has sufficient detail as required to ensure that the future development will be as proposed and envisioned. Four, it will significantly worsen a known public safety risk. Five, it will create harm, including by adding that risk, without providing demonstrated community benefit. And six, annexation does not conform to the adopted comprehensive plan and land use map. In closing, I would like to note that opposition to the Parker has been characterized as opposition to progress in general, but that is simply not true. All of Galena's growth plans and marketing talk about the critical importance of maintaining its rural character and the surrounding natural environment as keys to its attraction and therefore success. Twenty-six years ago, progress kept knocking on Galena's door in the form of a proposal for a large commercial development up by Horseshoe Mount. The people of Galena and Joe Davis County decided that that development there was not the sort of progress that Galena needed. The development did not happen, and Galena has clearly prospered without it. The same is true of the Parker. I learned very recently that my father was one of those opposed to the Horseshoe Mount area development. For fifty years, Jim Clark was a part of the fabric of this community, for a while running a main street business and then supplying fine wines to restaurants in town, while also playing a key role in a number of things that are still attractions to residents at first of life. I learned last week that he was quoted in the Chicago Tribune about that Horseshoe Mount proposal. The words he used are as relevant today regarding the Parker developments as they were twenty-six years ago. He said, quote, "This is the wrong development in the wrong location and possibly at the wrong time, although I guess anytime is the wrong time." Jim Clark died two years ago this very night. Among the last things he told us was that he hoped he had done his part to make the world a better place, not by forcing his will on anyone, but by instead urging people to just use common sense. Twenty-six years ago, Galena used its common sense in saying no to the Horseshoe Mount development, and shortly before that, Galena also used common sense to say no to a proposal for a resort surrounded by marine hospitals. In making both of those decisions, Galena kept its beautiful natural setting and its small-town charm while also keeping a thriving and growing economy. The people of Galena understood then, as they do now, that not every development proposal is the right thing in the right place, nor at the right time. I urge you to exercise that same common sense tonight, and please stop. Listen to the people that you represent and rethink this whole thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. Good evening. David, Anna, eleven oh seven Fourth Street. A lot of what is relevant to the amendment to the Parker annexation agreement has already been said in previous hearings and meetings, and you've heard from others tonight, so I won't repeat all that. I do want to mention a few things. The annexation agreement amendment would be based on approval of the PUD amendment, which was heard before the zoning board on November ninth. The draft minutes of the November nine zoning board meeting and tonight's city council agenda packet not provide a complete record of the testimony and evidence presented at the meeting. I'm not in any way disparaging the secretary's efforts, as I believe the minutes are often intended to be summaries and not transcripts. And the secretary exercises a high level of skill to distill testimony that is provided. I suspect the secretary listened to and heard all that was said better than anyone in that room, myself included. However, it's also true that the zoning board amendments provided in the tonight's packet do not cover all the information provided in testimony. For instance, I provided explanations with many specific preferences, sections of the ordinances, and the PUD application, and not all that is in the minutes that you bow. I recognize that the minutes are draft, and they appear to be the record that you would be basing your decision on. During the November ninth public hearing before the zoning board, the applicant was permitted to use the city's projector to present visual evidence and supporting materials during their testimony. The city prohibited me and others from using the city's projector to present visual evidence and supporting materials during my testimony. The adopted zoning board rules of procedure describe the hearing procedure in which both the applicant and objectors are able to provide evidence. However, the hearing was conducted unequally and permitted the applicant to provide testimony and evidence during the hearing in a manner that objectors were not. The amendment to the annexation agreement does not provide adequate detail or clarity on the rezoning or what changes are being made to the PUD plan or any requirements for compliance with the plan or any promised long-term community benefits and how they will be asserted. Details in agreements like this matter. Everything needs to be plain, clear, consistent, and complete. The annexation agreement amendment is based on the approval of the PUD amendment. The PUD amendment is not in conformance with the zoning law. This is readily apparent from an examination of the city codes and the amendment. The city has also not considered the criteria or followed the process required by the zoning board that's for approving or amending a preliminary plan. Testimony and evidence has been provided to the city highlighting some of these issues, so I won't repeat it here. But the zoning board's determination and recommendation regarding the PUD amendment shows very little of that testimony and evidence was discussed by the zoning board. Much of the zoning board's rationale for its recommendation of the PUD amendment is based on their personal opinions and speculations rather than careful consideration of testimony and facts. Many issues raised during the public hearing about lack of conformance with the ordinance and other issues were not discussed by the board. I recognize that the board may not need to address irrelevant testimony, but it should consider all of that testimony. As one example, it is not a secret that traffic, street, and public safety issues are a big concern of the PUD. This has been expressed over and over again since the beginning of the process. It's extremely frustrating that city officials, on the one hand, agree that traffic is a problem, and on the other hand, say everything is okay, all the while ignoring actual problems and suggesting that either nothing can be done or someone else should do something about it. I'm not going to go through all the traffic issues, find them in the record, going back to anywhere, but the contradictions and rationalizations from the city about traffic issues are not only don't make sense, they're dangerous for our community. In the end, the information presented to the city shows that the PUD amendment does not demonstrate conformance of the zoning ordinance, and it should not be approved, and the amendment to the annexation agreement should not be approved. This is not about opinions about progress or stereotypes about backyards, but about actual demonstrated conformance with city codes and actual impacts and harm surrounding neighbors and the community. I realize you all have a lot to consider tonight. This is a complex proposal. There's a lot of issues that need to be clearly understood and carefully evaluated. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dave. James, Ovo, fourteen seventy-seven South Raffey Hill Road, Galena Rice Township. The city council and the zoning board are confusing the public by ignoring and silence concerning the city code, refusing to discuss and answer questions involving facts and city codes. Last week, the zoning board now tried to bring up Walmart and tie Walmart in to direct equalization of this project. The issues that were involved with Walmart were very different neighborhood issues, Highway twenty issues, not sitting in the middle of a four-state approved and adopted watershed, adopted. And on and on, they weren't the same, and I'll leave it at that. So let's make that clear. These are two separate things. Fourth Street and Highway twenty, as said over and over again, is a dangerous intersection. The city council and the state of the Fourth Street and Highway twenty, I'm sorry, I went over there. It's a dangerous intersection. The city council is using emergency departments by name, police, fire, and EMS. Police, fire, and EMS to support the Parker project and the safety issues involved with the Highway twenty and Fourth Street intersection. This is simply false and degrading to those departments as a safety first issue. Just bring the emergency departments forward to answer questions in front of the entire community. We owe them that about your claim of their support for a critical and dangerous intersection. Just simply ask a question, and you will get the real answer. If we go out to the west side, out to Walmart, as mentioned, and ask all those businesses involved, did the city, council, zoning hold you to all the ordinances? Was there discussion and involvement with the Highway twenty corridor? Was the state of Illinois involved? Did you hold community meetings? In twenty oh five, the city of Galena Highway twenty design manual was made. The city Galena zoning ordinance zero slash zero five slash four, section one five four point three oh three, adopted on April eleventh. If you refer to page thirteen of that manual, it points out the East Hilltop section, and that East Hilltop section holds in it the proposed Parker area. This ordinance was acknowledged by Bill Nibel, Jim Baranski, Mark Moran, and many more. It ended up that It ended up that seventeen of the city officials were involved. Seven formed a committee. And Vandywell, if you will, and associates had two planners, one designer, and a creative director. During the zoning meeting on Wednesday, November 9, I brought up page after page, zoning issue after zoning issue, the first 24 pages of that manual. The city of Galena Highway 20 Design Manual. If you look at page 5, see Title 115 of the City Code of Ordinances, provisions contained in this manual shall prevail. Page 8, design standards are either mandatory or discretionary. The term required and prohibited are mandatory. It's used page after page in that. This manual identifies strong, successful businesses that were required to hold to the ordinance of the said manual. If you just look right up and down Highway 20 North, all those, all those businesses, you know, especially the new Casey's and that, were required to hang on to those ordinances. It actually highlights by pictures and makes examples of their compliances with the city ordinance. That manual can be found under zoning, references. It's right in the city website, and it's still used today. And people who are going to develop along that corridor, which by creating the Parker, you are creating a new corridor into the city. It's, nobody is looking at it. And I cannot understand why when all these other people up there have had to use that manual. And it is given to people who come to the city of Galena right now and say, here's what we expect you to do. The city of Galena expects you to stand by this manual. And so by people coming and taking that manual, and they can see right away what is prohibited, they walk away because they can't conform. The last thing I'd like to bring up is the city employees. The city council and the board has put the city of Galena employer, employees, and volunteers into this mix. You are asking them to stand aside of their oath and their commitment to the city ordinances and community as you have put them in a compromised position involving their jobs of honesty, honor, and commitment involving safety and enforcement of city code. And my father always said, what's said behind closed doors is wicked.
Metaphor link 401 Bogus Tree. Definition of insanity, they say, is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. And yes, speaking here again, is beginning to feel like insanity. I've had many sleepless nights since learning of this development, and in those moments when sleep will lose me, the same thoughts, questions ruminate in my head, and have yet to be answered by anyone in front of me. What I and many others ask is how does the Parker development benefit Galena? Is adding another establishment to operate tourists who may or may not continue to come thus to buy the cost of trust, faith, and belief of competency in those that I stand before? When a community does not diversify itself, it becomes beholden to the whims of outsiders, it loses its autonomy. Galena is a tipping point, and we should all be very critical in the next, in the next steps that we take. With an economy that is on the brink and a dwindling and aging population in the region, why are we not instead focusing on bringing industry and better paying living wage jobs to the area? We're expecting tourism to continue unabated. What happens when Galena is no longer Galena as we know it? And the tourism ceases to exist as we have come to depend on? What about the people that chose to either continue to live here in spite of the dismal financial opportunities? Or those that chose to live here in spite of very little or no opportunity for financial growth, but saw a way of life that superseded the uncertainties of finance? Are your neighbors, friends, family, constituents any less deserving of growth and prosperity? Or does the benefit to a few, and most certainly to a developer, in the name of more tourism dollars, i.e. low-paying, unskilled jobs, trump the community as a whole? An unequivocal answer is no. The community, when healthy, allows all to reap its fruits and should not be held hostage by misguided thought that those have been entrusted to the voters to make prudent and sound decisions based on fact, community input, and accountability, and not by the misguided opinion that you on this council have total jurisdiction over the desires of the residents of Galena. I certainly do not expect any answers brought, I, excuse me, I certainly do not expect any answers tonight, as there have thus far been none. But I can only hope that you can find it in yourself. Ask what causes this to the community, relationships, and our future, not just a few tourism dollars that will benefit very few. As I ask myself at most decisions that I make, will the impact benefit only me or service to others? And will it stand not only my time, but the future of others as well? That is the question I think needs to be asked here. Truth and right are easy to uphold and defend. Deception is hoped to be maintained by silence. Thank you.
I'm Joan Marie, 706 Park Avenue. I've lived in Galena since 1978. I've been a Realtor in Galena for 29 years. There was a poll listening, zoning board members, protesting that values could increase for the Davis Creek home. Because the property next to them sold for over six times its actual market value. This makes no common sense. It is complete over there. That's not how it works. Don't compare commercial land to residential property to determine value. In truth, the property values will decrease for owners impacted by this resort. Based on location, 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 this actually changes their location. If it remained agricultural, values would most likely increase in the future. Buyers coming to Galena to choose to live outside of town were looking for the peace and quiet of our beautiful surrounding communities. Like the current residents next to the Parker want to keep. They never had a buyer. He wanted to live in the country. Would have considered being here a high-traffic, loud commercial resort. As a Realtor, I am legally obligated to disclose the scope of this development to all potential buyers who may be impacted, so they can make an informed decision. No buyer that I've ever worked with would risk offering a base six times the actual market value of agricultural land, wanting to use it commercially without a rezoning contingency in the contract, unless they're totally confident that it would be rezoned. It seems the property developer had that confidence. This has to be why. Conservation concerns, comprehensive plans, negative impact on local businesses, and the quality of life for Galena residents are only given lip service and improving the budget. I didn't appreciate the repeated warning to the zoning board that if this 18-acre was an annex, it would just go back to the already approved plan, which in reality has more issues for the developer. I want to know if 18-acre parcel, owned agricultural, and have a two-lane road, two commercial resort on it, if not annexed into the city. Does this in any way benefit the city or just the development? Be prepared. The potential land was sold while zoned agriculture. Based on the sale price and using it as a comparable, the assessor could justify significantly raising the tax value of all agricultural land within the mile and a half of the project. The loss of quaint Galena for residents and tourists begins here. With the door wide open for other commercial developments that will have to be approved, if not, the next lawsuit against the city will be brought by a developer, and another neighbor deserves to sell against land for millions. I think we better just lose our beloved slogan of "The town is time for God." In the future, it will be known as "The town that greed got." A lot of us oldies won't be here anymore. Our children and grandchildren won't want to be. Thank you.
My name is Chris Harris. I live at 114 South Ice Street, from Galena. I spent, geez, 15 hours of listening to the testimony to write these things that fall on deaf ears. I'm going to be very brief tonight. The amendment that you're considering is language which refers to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. And on that note, I'd like to address the issue of US 20 and Blackjack Road. I handed out a profile that's about 10 hours old from the Illinois Department of Transportation. And it clearly depicts US 20 at the intersection of Blackjack Road. The numbers are pretty evident. This is over a 24-hour period. 6,700 vehicles, including a lot of big trucks passing through that intersection. The traffic inbound and outbound on Blackjack is 1,400. This Parker project now envisions opening up the site to the general public for trails and walking and hiking. So, you know, in pondering on that, we're making a bigger problem than we originally had. We're going to have a lot more people going out there just to hike, walk, have big, like someone sort of work. So why don't you look at this 1,400 car count on Blackjack and imagine what that's going to be like when they're trying to get onto 20? You know, we all make mistakes, and I hope we don't make a mistake with this issue. Because I look back 12, 15 years ago at Norris Lane, lane meaning a country road. And what a nightmare and death trap that has turned into, and still is, in terms of safety of the public. This thing would be a monster. You know, people offer opinions, yeah, we got traffic going out there for Chestnut, this, this, and none of us here are experts. I've been to accidents, he's been to accidents. And they're not pretty when a semi-trailer slashes into a Volkswagen. So I'll cut it short. You know, this is a whole lot to digest. But on the issue of safety, I think going ahead with this is going to be reckless, derelict to approve this. Why don't you postpone this? Let's take a little time, slow it down, and get a professional traffic study rather than opinions and suggestions and innuendos. Thanks a lot. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? I probably rebuttal from those in favor. Any other questions?
So I just want to remind the council that what we're really considering tonight is the amendment that the original project was approved. And this amendment is not changing the intensity or the density of the project. And so whatever values that were generated during that first set of hearings are, these still, those still hold. Whatever discussions about traffic, discussions about other items, nothing has changed here in terms of what we are not asking for more roads, more units, more, you know, more, more intensity. It's going to be exactly the same. There was a question about the Highway 20 Design Manual. A good, very valid question, but if you look more closely at that manual, and you look more closely at the project and its distance off of the center line of Route 20. So about the, the north edge of our project is, is at the 1,200-foot line between the front of our project and the center line of Highway 20 of the hill. The bulk of our project is within the 1,200 to 400 range. And the, the majority of the restrictions are in that 12, within the 1,200-foot range, within Route 20 of the center line, Route 20, 1,200 to 2,400 is mostly dealing with the use of building materials, whether they're, you know, allowed or whether they're, you know, proposed, whatever. So so I just wanted to point that out. But then I, I should say, I mean, the, if the amendment doesn't pass, if the annexation doesn't pass, then the original project that was, that was presented for the original preliminary PUD would, would just go forward.
Is that a question, Jim?
Yes, I do, ma'am. Jim, I have two questions about the 18 acres. First of all, do you have any sense about how much of that acreage will be, pardon me, planted and curd?
I would say we're probably close to half, because it's, it's from, the idea is to plant prairie from, there's a, there's a big tree by itself, sort of at the, at the spot where it starts to go down. And that's where the, all the erosion problems are on that hillside. So we would be planting the prairie from about where that tree starts all the way down to the road. And then the rest of it would be big wood.
Yeah, and that's my, my other question. My understanding is that it's common on planning and maintaining the vineyard to use a significant amount of pesticides. I may be wrong about this, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, so we made our presentation for the final PUD plan for Phase 1A, which was just the planning. There were discussions about the best practices for using pesticides and herbicides early on in the process. And there's methods by which they are to be applied that are consistent with best management practices, which is what was done.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jim. Anybody else wish to speak at this time? Just, just, well, Jim, would you like, Wendy, go first or you go first? He had his hand up back there, Wendy. Go ahead, Wendy.
Cindy Clark, eleven oh seventy-four. Just to address a couple of things that Mr. Baranski said. Yes, what's being considered here tonight is, you know, the amendments and the annexation. However, I did point out in my testimony, a number of issues with both of those things that tie into the larger project itself. Also, with respect to the traffic thing, the original proposal did not address traffic and neither has this one. It still remains. And the fact of the access road and the information that the county engineer provided about the fact that that will have more traffic on it than most county roads makes that a very valid point for you folks to really concern, to concern yourselves with discussing tonight. And I know that the original project would go forward. But the question again would be, is there a valid access point, given the issues, the amount of traffic, et cetera? Regarding the the hillside and the planting of prairie and so on. Again, one of the, one of the things I guess that wasn't really discussed or disclosed very well is that that roadway that's on there right now is a gravel driveway. And certainly addressing some of the erosion problems on there would be great, but just not having cows on there will do that. I mean, prairie is a good thing. I will definitely say that. But that roadway, which is now a narrow gravel driveway, will be expanded to two lanes. And at the top, where there's just a bare track going off into the grass, that will become a paved roadway accessing a commercial development. And another question that really hasn't been asked about this is if having a major roadway whose specific purpose is to access a commercial development is actually allowed use on limited agriculture. That question is left unanswered. And then finally, regarding the final Phase one A pesticide question that was asked in those discussions, I did provide material to the zoning board about from a local vineyard who or vineyard, whatever you call a guy that grows the grapes and manages the vineyards. He provided an entire list of chemicals that the zoning board did not acknowledge or discuss. And there was actually no information provided in that Phase one A application or in the discussion or in the final about the chemicals that would be used, other than mention of some weed killer at the beginning. And that's a real important question because if this is going to be within the city limits. Sure, right now it's out there in the country and certain rules apply, but once it's in the city, different rules apply. And I don't know what the rules are for using pesticides in the city, but that's a valid question that has been not been addressed.
James Ball, I still live there, fourteen seventy-seven South. Mr. Baranski brings up the point that what was in the previous meeting is over. And I agree with some of, some of that. However, they now are applying for a new entrance. And that entrance now brings right back up how connects to Highway twenty. So all your statements tonight as far as that new entrance goes are valid and hold. They opened the door. They want a new entrance. That new entrance comes to Fourth Street and Highway twenty, which again is a class A. Mr. Brenet, Mr., I can't even get it out. Mr. Baranski, excuse me, Jim. Has brought up numbers and and lines and things that go from the highway to here to there. But he was involved in this and he knows those numbers and those lines and twelve hundred feet, seven hundred feet, six hundred feet from the corridor of Highway twenty. However, in their design, they did not use those numbers. They used what is called nodals and they actually inserted the areas that they are speaking about. And again, if you look at page thirteen, the Blackjack Road is in there and the entire corner of this project is in this manual, not with numbers, but by pictures and by discussion of exactly what it is. So I wanted to state that out about his stating bringing up numbers to you from the road, the Blackjack Road in and out. This doesn't use numbers. This uses pictures to do it.
Just two little things. I wonder if you're aware of the fact that there's a tunnel on your Blackjack Road at the intersection of Fourth Street and Blackjack. It goes from the old brewery John Meets Old Building kitty corner over to that stone rubble where the cooperage was in the brewery. And I'm wondering if all this additional traffic is going to make that road cave in that tunnel. I've been years since I've been down there, but it's just, it's made out of big rocks. The other thing is, the second time that Jim Baranski showed us some things in his office on his big computer screen about this development. He was sitting there on a piece of property that's very much like ours. He's got a great big yard, probably an acre. There were two young bucks out there hating their horns. He's surrounded by brush. It's a lot like ours. And I said, Jim, how would you feel if somebody decided to put this around your house? He said, well, I wouldn't let him do it.
Anybody else wish to address in this open, the council, this open, publicly? At this time, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item number twenty-two C dash zero four two eight. Do I have a motion on first?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Moving second to close that public hearing on, I remember trying to see day zero four two eight paper. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, motion carries. That's what we had then, Consent Agenda, C A C A twenty-two dash twenty-one. Do I have a motion on that Consent Agenda?
We could motion to approve the consent agenda, C A twenty-two dash twenty-one.
All right, moving second on Consent Agenda, C A twenty-two dash twenty-one. Any questions on any of them? Or personal question?
Comment, I'm totally for the phone system for the police department and I'm really for the contract with the majority of this county animal control for and also the replacement of equipment for the rec park. We had a lot of great things on this Consent Agenda and I think they're all, they're all very, very good.
Any else? Hey, girl, Mary Beth. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, motion carries. That's what we had then unfinished business and we have not tonight. Let's get into new business. The first item up is item number twenty-two C dash four three five is discussion, impossible action on zoning counter number twenty-two P V A dash O two. It's an application by Two North Quality Homes LLC for an amendment to the planned unit development plan to add eighteen point two four acres with an underlying zoning classification of limited agricultural upon annexation into the city of Galena. There's some type of motion on that. Motion or not? Or a person bump on?
I make a motion that we approve the application by Two North Quality Homes LLC for amendment. There's a plan unit development plan to add eighteen point two four acres with an underlying zoning classification of limited agriculture upon annexation into the city of Galena. Twenty-two C zero four three five.
Number second on that? I remove second line number twenty-two C day zero four three five discussion. Bobby, you want to start it?
Fine, listen, everybody. I can see you don't want it. I, you know, I think it's, I think this eighteen point two four acres added to this development enhances the driveway, the houses, the way it's laid out. Understand it still brings the same traffic into Fourth Street, every twenty, but so I understand by asking questions, there hasn't been an accident there in over two years.
Oh, who's jury?
Yeah, I agree with everything Bobby said. I, I read through these minutes for two hours Sunday afternoon. I read this thing and it looks like the H P B did their homework. They studied it and they all agreed that it should have happened. So that's all I want to say.
Mr. Hall, I think there's been possibly one accident over on Fourth and Decatur in the past year. And what I understand it was a truck coming down with bail haze and one of the bales came off and and hit a car. Other than that, I don't believe in last year. There's been any accidents over there.
No, I think there's, you know, I'm sure that's and no reason to think that's not true. However, I do think there's a very good reason for for I dot designating that as a, as a dangerous intersection. And I, I still believe that the resort is going to contribute to the concerns we have about the safety of of both intersections involved.
Nothing. I just think that the eighteen point two four acres enhances the plan and there's not much has changed since the original one. So I'd like to see them get additional land to put out on.
I too think Two North Quality Homes is demonstrating consideration for its neighbors by purchasing this additional eighteen point two three nine acres. They're trying to move the entrance to an existing lane. And by removing the lower road and and moving the cottages higher on the property. I mean, I think that's a major improvement for the neighborhood. There's also the stormwater control measures that they're very serious about. Those are also to help not only the neighbors, but to help everybody. All measures in this eighteen point two three nine application, I think, are are good for all the neighbors and for all the citizens of Galena. We were, just to let everybody know, we were able to see and I did attend most of the zoning meeting. I didn't make it to the very end. But I did make it to the very end of it by being able to watch. So we might not have had it actually written out, but just so you know that we, we did actually have an opportunity to go in. It was all recorded. And we all had access to that. So everybody had an opportunity to do that. Another small question that was presented was about agriculture. And the farm's close to that. There's no concern for that. Agriculture is not assessed by comparables. I own a tree farm and it has nothing to do with what my neighbors, I pretty much sold their property for. Somebody else made an accusation that this had to be had some kind of a preapproval before they made their application. I could tell you one hundred percent from one alternate person that there was no, absolutely no preapproval on it. So I don't, I, I took a little offense with that. I apologize for getting a little upset about it, but.
Well, listening to everybody again tonight, you know, it's basically coming down to the same stuff we're talked about from the very get go. Tonight is the, for the annexation of eighteen acres into the city. Usually I, I'm in favor of property owners that voucher, you want to come into the city, but I think this would be a better access point or interest and access point for that particular P U D that is already been approved. Now, Highway twenty. Was it you, Jim, that said that nineteen eighty-seven when I dot made it a class one critical thing? Okay, it's in one of these bad reports I got and I'm taking it to myself. Where in the heck is Springfield at? Where in the heck are the ticks in that? If this is the number one bad spot in the whole state of Illinois, why aren't they up here helping us? Why aren't they saying something? We can talk to them all the time. It's not in the five-year plan, you know. Wait, Jim, Jim, let me talk. You had your turn to talk. Jim? I'm talking now.
You asked me, I'm talking.
I asked you about the, the, the date. I didn't ask you the, the, they spout upon it. All right, Jim, I'm dragging you out of it. Now be quiet. That's one thing that really bothers me is that the state doesn't want to come up or even put it in the staff five-year plan for us. Now we'll go stay on. We're going to stay on.
They do. They will. And they, they do and they will come here and tell you why they are.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Baranski interrupted me. He wasn't put out.
Jim, but he shut up. You didn't.
Oh, he didn't shut up. He's still going.
I hate to get him started, but that's one thing that really bugs me. We got to work on the traffic. And right now mostly traffic going on Fourth Street is going to the town. You know, there's probably about one, one percent of the cars that actually live on Fourth Street down on Webster Street down behind where Catherine. There's so many things that have developed out in that county that we do have a numerous amount of traffic using that street. We as a city have to maintain that street all the time and we have to look at this traffic seriously on twenty, whether it be just whatever we can do, whatever the state can do for us, and we'll be glad to associate with them and help them. I think the county should get involved. Very much so, because that's, once they get past the, the city limits, it's a county road. Saying that, on this annexation of eighteen acres into the city tonight, you know, there are some things that they did do differently, but we got to look at the traffic, storm, the runoff water is being applied for very good with what I hear from according to the engineers, the brilliant engineers there. So it is something we got to still continue to work on to make a little bit better. Saying that, did everybody have the opportunity to read the minutes or seen the video or anything of that nature? We all did. I read the minutes. All right, Joe, why don't you go ahead and go through the criteria on section one fifty-four?
What we're going to do is just go around the table similar to what we did with the zoning board meeting and go through the seven criteria that they considered when making their recommendation. And I'll just start to my left with all the person and go around and have each of you state your opinion as to these seven issues that they considered. And the first one is whether the existing text or zoning designation was an error at the time of adoption. All the person.
I would say there's no error.
Older person Westmeyer? Older person Bernstein?
No, not to my knowledge.
Older person McCoy?
No, no error, but I'll say it's a significant improvement for the neighbors and the development.
All the person Hart? No error. All the person Kiefer?
I think everything was in order.
And their runner?
By the time of adoption, there was no error in that.
Second criteria is whether there's been a change in the character in the area or throughout the city due to installation of public facilities or other zone changes, new growth, trans deterioration, development transitions, et cetera. All the person we didn't?
I don't think that there's been any changes. I think that you know, I had pointed out the poor farm of where Fragrant Tomatoes was. I think it enhances the current plan that was already been approved. And then as far as growth trends, the only other thing, and it's not even approved yet, so I don't know. But it would be the brewery that we were talking about on the Highway twenty as well. So.
All the person Westmeyer?
There have been some, I believe so, but not on Blackjack. New wedding venue popped up, up beyond Grandos Motel, possible new motel in the future. Walking and bike trails by the river and Gateway Park and Horseshoe Mound and and all that's on the east side of the river.
All the person Bernstein?
No, I think there has been some change in character and I go along with pretty well how much was what older pardon me, older personal Westmeyer had to say particularly was the development of the trails.
All the person McCoy?
Yes, I'll agree with it. With the trail, it's just absolutely longer form and one of our goals has always been to, to add to that, to make it even a little bit.
one of our goals has always been to to add to them, to make it even a little bit more positive. But I also agree with all the person West Meyer with the the wedding venue and the additional potential hotel.
All the person Hahn?
I agree with everybody, everything that's said, but also the facilities have been upgraded all around Galena. Silver plant to a new water tower, the water mains, new streets. Reservoir, I mean. The force that east side has got a lot of new water mains that were serious deterioration and we're doing good, and I think that the upgrades to bring infrastructure to this development very well will probably help the residents who do not have that now.
All the person Kiefer?
Yeah, Katie brought up what I was going to talk about, the old war farm, which the counties should have never let them tear that down, but when Fried Green Tomatoes was there. There were a lot of people and that reduced a lot of traffic. It reduced traffic on blackjack, so that was an improvement.
Yeah, yes, I do agree with some of the things that were spoken here in regards to like the new waste water treatment plant, it's that have capacity right now. Things have grown up out there in the county very much and have more probably coming to it and we have the wedding venue like all person Westy said. It it just changing over time and for the continue to develop and that's on these.
Third one, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area and defining characteristics of the proposed zoning district. Or whether there have been, or whether there may be adverse impacts on the capacity or safety of the portion of the street network influenced by the rezoning, parking problems, or environmental impacts that the new zone may generate such as excessive stormwater runoff, water, air, or noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other nuisances. All the person we know.
It would have less pavement, reduction in trees that they plan to cut down. As far as the other items in here, you know, it's too early to address noise pollution, but I think that people do a good job is monitoring that for city ordinances. And then as far as permits that had to be taken out for the PA for the Clear Water Act and some of the other watershed. I think that the bioswales and then the rain gardens are a are a nice option.
All the person West Meyer?
I believe it is kept compatible with the surrounding areas. Eighteen point two four acres will maintain limited egg. Will improve your all safety by moving the entrance further south. More green space, better plants for water runoff. Lighting should not be an issue using down lighting, LED bulbs, trees should block majority of the lighting and noise. They're going to cut down less trees. They're going to get reduce about thirty-two thousand feet of payments. And with the shuttle that they they're going to provide, hopefully that's going to help with the parking situation.
All the person Bernstein?
Yeah, I still maintain that there will be adverse impacts in terms of traffic, increased traffic. And I also think there is a potential for other negative impacts such as noise pollution. However, that does remain to be seen, so I don't think we can really say one way or the other at this point in time.
All the person McCoy?
Again, I think it's going to be a lot better entrance coming in off of like back there than than what we had prior to this. I I do like their commitment to the control of the lighting pollution as well and then the access, the walking trails.
All the person Hahn?
I agree with everything that's been said, and I think Fair Graham did an excellent job of drawing up these plans to show great gardens, both bioswales, detention ponds. And you can see that they are trying to cover every issue that are people's concern.
All the person Kiefer?
Yeah, I agree with that. I I think the developers address problem of water runoff through storms and I don't, I really don't think the lighting is going to be a problem.
Well, I have to agree with all the person panel in regards to traffic. It is moving. It will increase. The thing about it is a different entrance point may help that, but you are going to have cars, a lot of cars on that road in addition to what we have now. Stormwater runoff, I think Fair Graham done a good job in regards to the rain gardens, the berms, the little ponds that's going to have, and probably even starting up there if this gets approved up there by the the new entrance point where it's always rolling. It's going to start and maybe even do a lot better job than what's there now. Probably go to improve it considerably down at the bottom. As far as the noise, the lights, the smell. I know at this time, you know, I think of the very good things should come of this, but if they don't, it could be.
Number four, whether the proposal is in conformance with and in further and subsequent implementation of the goals and policies of comprehensive plan, other adopted plans and policies, intents and requirements of this code and other city regulations and guidelines. For all the person we know.
Just that every phase out of this needs approval. I think that's very reassuring. I do also, a lot has been brought up about the comprehensive plan. It is stated. I think it does need to be readdressed and I know if you would have come to our budget meeting, we did talk about addressing that next year, so that will be nice to reevaluate that.
All the person West Meyer?
I believe that does go along with the comprehensive plan. This plan states that the city will be proactive in annexing land to achieve its vision with strive to be a beautiful place to live and visit to a high standard cleanliness, maintain high quality of air and water and soil. And each step would need city, state, and federal permits, so we get, they have to go through all that stuff.
All the person Bernstein?
I do not think that this is in conformance with with the comprehensive plan. Specifically with land use portion of that.
Thank you. All the person McCoy?
I do think it complies with the comprehensive plan as well. This additional annexation will enhance North Quality Homes' continued commitment to the restoration of a modern hospital, highly significant Galeno landmark. The comprehensive plan states the city will strive to diversify its local economy and improve the business environment for tourism. The development does both. Grady Hill was shown as a potential PUD, so the the plan anticipated PUDs on the east side.
All the person Hahn?
I agree with everything that's been said. I I do think it follows the plan. And as I've said in other meetings, every phase of this development comes back to us. Nothing happens without another vote by the city council on final plan of this project. And I one hundred percent know that's what's going to happen.
All the person Kiefer?
Yeah, Bobby said what I was going to say. Each phase is phase needs permits and public hearings. The city still will have control of what happens if there's something that isn't supposed to be there or whatever. We have control and we can stop it.
Mayor Renner?
I believe in everything and met as far as that question was asked. Our city staff has gone over this numerous time, researched it. Comprehensive plan, it's outdated, like Katie said, needs to be updated, move forward. And they cannot do until the final plans and before they do anything, it always has to come back for each phase. So I think we still got a pretty good handle on everything at this time.
On whether adequate public facilities and services are available or will be made available concurrent with the projected impacts of developments and the proposal. All the person we know.
Yes, I did talk to individuals who work for various departments and they said that they are comfortable with servicing additional facilities as you, some people have stated that the sewage plant isn't even running at full capacity right now.
All the person West Meyer?
All right, that's what I had. Wastewater Treatment Plant is not at full capacity. It's probably at fifty percent right now. It's going to have cleaner water with the water and sewer. That's going to be run up there at no cost to the city. They're going to have underground utilities. I don't believe there'll be much issues with the emergency personnel. They work seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And I don't believe on a daily basis, they're not, they will hardly ever get a call up there.
All the person Bernstein?
Yes, I think that the public facility should be adequate for all the reasons that have been stated. I'm a little less convinced about the the services. Although I'm hearing from all the person Leenan, she's spoken to individuals in each of these departments. There's still maybe problems at times in an emergency about getting up there where to where a particular service is needed. And we also, I think, especially with the EMTs, I believe they're not fully staffed. And so we would need to, staffing could be a problem.
All the person McCoy?
I agree too with the as much needed improvement of the east side water and sewer system. Probably anybody that lives on the east side knows that our sewage on the east side goes all the way to Adams Street. Then it crosses over and then it worked its way all the way back down to the sewer plant. And it's sure going to be nice to have a other route that we're bringing a stream of water over. And then what we're doing with the sewage at this time.
All the person Hahn?
Yeah, I've spoke on this before, that facilities are more than adequate to handle this project and more like.
All the person Kiefer?
Yeah, I think we have. I added with public facilities, great police department, EMTs. Fire department is great. We have a beautiful hospital. I don't think. I I have no problem with facilities, public facility.
Mayor Renner? I agree with the public facilities that we have. I mean, right now it's in the Galena Fire District. It's also in the Galena EMS District and also it's close to town. The police officers would be answering calls out there now. Will it be out there more? I hope not. And I think as far as the public facilities with wastewater treatment plant with our service services. I I think it's adequate for what we need now.
Six, whether there's an adequate supply of land available in the subject area and the surrounding community to accommodate the zoning and community needs.
Yeah, I would say I think that the eighteen point twenty-four acres enhances the development I just said before. I am happy to see that some of the citizen comments and concerns were addressed in the relocation of some items on there.
I believe so. I think the developer purchased that eighteen point two four acres to hopefully eliminate most of the neighbors' concerns. He is showing concern. And the Gary should be happy because it used to be right seventy-five feet above their house. They moved it down to that road. And now they're way above and they eliminated some cabins, so I think they're trying to work with everybody here today.
All the person West Meyer?
My short answer is yes.
Okay. All the person McCoy?
I'll say the same, yes, but I do think the seventy-eight acres was adequate, but and the you just don't know get better.
All the person Hahn?
I agree with everything said.
All the person Kiefer?
Yeah, I agree with everything that was said.
All the, yes, I I agree that eighteen point two four acres is an asset. It's going to help the surrounding area there. It's a great idea to get that.
Seven, whether there is a need in the community for the proposal, whether there will be benefits derived by the community or area by the proposing proposed rezoning. All the person we know.
So I think it will contribute to the same businesses, downtown merchants. It's going to enhance midweek traffic as well as weekend traffic. There is not a lot of event space in Galena in the city that can accommodate two hundred and fifty people plus. So hopefully that will attract some corporations to have business meetings here. The number of occupancy that was addressed at the zoning meeting, so year-to-date occupancy as far as large lodging in the city limits, which would be Best Western Ramada Country and Suites in Sony Creek. According to Smith Travel Research for year-to-date is fifty-eight to sixty percent as a whole. Running twelve month is fifty to sixty percent, so it really doesn't vary. Now, that doesn't include Airbnb numbers. So what does that mean? That means that they will continue to displace people on Friday and Saturday nights to other markets, Dubuque, other Joe Davis establishments. Definitely May to November fourth. But there are twelve months out of the year, so I do think is it going to take some pieces out of the pie? Yes, I absolutely think that will happen. But as a whole, we can take more visitors and there is a need for more rooms made to November. I can't comment on the taxes. I think it will benefit the schools by adding to the tax base overall for Galena. And then lastly, I do think it will bring more entry-level jobs. It's kind of disheartening to hear a lot of people talk about unskilled labor and entry-level jobs because we all started there and we've all worked our way up, so I think to be able to provide Galena itself and then the people who live in Galena something to come home to and work their way up. Remote work is big nowadays and I think it's a great opportunity for people in our town.
All the person West Meyer?
Okay, I believe there will be benefits to the community with the downtown business people. The school system, fire department, police, library, East Galena Township County, Joe Davis Electric, Joe Carroll Electric, City of Galena, and include more walking trails and to go off of what Katie said about the motels. According to the twenty-one equal impact numbers, the state released only forty-one counties in the state that have improved occupancy over two hundred and nineteen over two hundred, two thousand nineteen. Joe Davis County was one of the forty-one counties to increase. Sixty counties did not have an increase, so COVID bump could be translated differently depending on who was doing the translating. Not everyone had a bump in twenty twenty-one, what Joe Davis County did, so that's that's a good sign.
All the person West?
Well, I look at this as a a major concern. Is there a need? And my response to that is if we were a municipality that was trying to position ourselves as a tourism destination, I think this would be a perfect solution. But that's not the case with us. We draw more visitors than just about any place except Chicago, and I don't believe that this resort is something that is needed in our community.
All the person McCoy?
Well, I agree with everybody you said here. One thing that we haven't talked about, I mean, this is going to help stabilize everybody's water and sewer bill. We're taking on a big customer here and and that's going to be a real plus. Not only that, but all the other taxes that not only are we going to hold, we mentioned the the school, the library and all the other taxing bodies are are going to be able to hold from this. The goal with tourism to be, to make it really work is you you want to change your tourist from quantity to quality. And quality means they stay overnight. And if they can stay overnight, then they're going to triple the amount of money that they're going to leave in the area. And and I I know we had a comment tonight that that says we we need to get away from depending on tourism, but that is the economic engine that supports what makes Galena special and the reason that most of us are here.
All the person Hahn?
I agree with everything that's said, and going back to this eighteen point two four acres, we're actually talking about. This enhances and makes safer what we've already talked about, an existing thing. And yes, I do think we need to do more and change things up for to keep tourists coming to this area. Let's face it, there's vineyards and wineries popping up all over Joe Davis County. It's like with a little Napa Valley in Illinois. There everywhere. And I I think it's great.
All the person Kiefer?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be great for the city. It's going to the tax base and the jobs and bottom line is. Bottom line is, as a city council, we're supposed to try to attract new businesses and I think that's what we're doing.
Right, I believe uh, competition and enterprises, free enterprise is important to any town. When you're a tour for a data tower and industrial town. I think it's going to be a benefit if it goes through completely uh, with the tax dollars and uh, new jobs. The tax bases that will be garnished from this agreement. So I think it uh, it'd be a, something's needed in town in regards to them, that's on the bill. You know, some, there's times when um, they go to Dubuque to get a room, I'd rather see him sitting here in Galena someplace. Seven, okay. Okay, now is there any other discussion at this time, motion?
Just one thing before you vote, there was a, a protest filed today by the adjoining landowners of the True North Development. And in order to approve the motion, there's a motion to approve in a second on the table. It will require a super majority of the board in order to. Okay, anything else at this time?
I have one other comment, he says aside. Um, I think, just in general, I would like to see any other ways that we could hook other people who live in that area into city water and sewer and that kind of thing. Um, if at all, when possible. Um, and then I think we definitely need to address the traffic. It should have, like you said, it should have been addressed a long time ago. And I think it's something that we need to not just talk about that we're going to do, that we actually maybe form a committee. Or something, but we need to somehow get some traction and get something going on that. Because without the Parker, with the Parker, take that off the table, it still needs to be addressed. And I think everybody in Galena can agree on that. So that's one thing that we can all get on board with, and I think we just need to move forward and do something about that.
And I agree with that a hundred percent, Katie. But what's on the county, and what's planned to be built on the county in regards to homes and subdivisions, it's going to get worse, even without the Parker. It's going to get worse, and that's what I can understand. States been sitting on their hands. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
All the person.
Yeah, um, I just want to make one additional comment. I hear a lot of um, benefits have been raised around the council table, I agree with a lot of them. Um, but my main concern is that I think we need to take into consideration um, how so many of the people in our community feel about this project. And uh, as I said before, that's how I'm going to vote.
Yeah, regarding, regarding that traffic problem, dealing with I dot. People have been complaining to me about traffic down where, where I dot's done on, on Spring Street. Um, and I say, hey, the city has absolutely nothing to do with it, it's all I dot. You know, you got to deal with them and you can tell them and ask them. Can you do this or do that? And they'll just look at you and say, we're going to do it our way and that's, that's the bottom line.
Let's go to take some arm twist and I've, you know, if we got it, if we got any help. You know, connections or something might be worth looking at too, with the company also. All right, anything else? All right, take Robert.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 No, okay, motion carry, all right. Let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-two C day zero four three six. It's first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to an annexation agreement with True North Quality Homes LLC to annex and add eighteen point two three nine acres to the planned unit development plan. This also takes the super majority to. On the first reading. Uh, discussion or motion, audible.
Yeah, we can motion that, that we approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of the amendment to the annexation agreement with True North Quality Homes LLC to annex and add eighteen point two three nine acres to the planned unit development plan, point two C zero four three six.
Second, all right, move second, I have number twenty-two C day zero four three six. Um, any discussion on the first reading, well understood, okay, all right, take Robert.
Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-two C day zero four three seven, possible reconsideration of calendar number twenty-one C day zero five one four. It's an ordinance authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement with John and Roseanne Truman for the property at one zero eight four zero highway. Well, I, I need a motion for reconsideration in a second if we're going to do this, all the person Bobby on.
I'll make a motion that we open this up for reconsideration of calendar number twenty-one C desk. Zero five one four, an ordinance authorizing execution. My annexation agreement with John Wilson and Roseanne Truman for the property of ten eighty, eight forty highway twenty, twenty-two C desk.
Okay, I have a second on that. Second, all right, you move second, I have number twenty-two C day zero four three seven. Go ahead with the new information you have.
Well, at the last meeting, they brought up that there actually isn't sewer up there to that building and that would, the proposed use of that building will not run on the existing septic system or septic system period in that area. And I believe that we should help in the and as I always believe that everyone, if we can help get sewer and utilities needed for the area, especially of business. And in this area, it actually bringing it up helps encompass getting it across the highway to existing property like Bonzamical, Gunner Property. And what else that might happen there. And I'd like to propose that we contribute no more than twenty thousand five hundred dollars towards the materials for this project. To be paid after material is installed. Plus, keep the back, five-year tax abatement and no charge for the sewer water hookups to this property.
Okay, so you're saying um, running up from the existing, and I think that's down behind furrows in that general area. Run it up to the property line.
It's eight hundred, because I'm told for, man, it's eight hundred and twenty feet of sewer pipe, having three manholes.
How is that counting? Now, we, we want to go under the highway for the property on the other side that don't have sewer and water on it.
That's not counting that, that's not counting that, that would be future. Just, or added, that'd be something the city would have.
That'd be something that twenty.
Yeah.
Something besides twenty thousand.
Right, that is something, no, conclude that's not to do with them really. But in order to get even, just enough to have this up that far to that.
Do, but if we're going to ride across the highway, we best move on it, because it'd be best to do it all at once.
We can, we can, we can look at boring now, but that's got to be a separate.
Yeah, first read now is just for uh, to help them with what they're doing. Fifty feet, okay, any other, you got any thoughts on this jury?
I do, I believe whatever reasonable is, everybody in the city should have sewer and water hookup if it's feasible. Uh, and I think, unfortunately, this should have been annexed into the city years ago, but it hasn't been. Um, but now we have the opportunity to get a business up there, that'd be a good business. And I think the city should take care of the sewer going up there.
And to assess with it, yeah. Now, keep in mind what both of you guys have said about everybody should have sewer and water. I, I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree with what they said, I think we should do everything we can to help these guys up there. It's a, it's a new business, they're going to, they're going to develop it nice, it's going to, I think it's going to be a nice um, project. When they get done with it, I think we should help them. Every, every move again.
Okay, Mark.
I just got a question, it's my understanding and what, what Bobby and Jerry are talking about is we're paying for the materials up to twenty thousand five hundred dollars. So we're not running, you know, so we, we are paying for the materials, just by the fact, I just wanted a question.
That's what we. Eight inch pipe.
It's eight inch pipe. Or the manholes. The bedding stone, mantle castings.
Yeah, discussion on this. Everybody understand the motion, up to twenty thousand five hundred dollars by the materials. Okay. Take what, oh, maybe this.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
She's not.
Yeah.
I think it was the motion to reconsider. Oh, all right. Oh, no, I never did make the other motion, I said what I wanted to do, I did not make the motion, you're right.
Right, okay, I made it to reconsideration, Bob.
Yeah, you're right.
Right over me.
All right, I know, me too. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we, for this, the materials. Eight hundred and twenty feet of S T R thirty-five, three manholes, three mantle casting. Approximately two hundred and fifty feet, kind of three quarter cleaning stone bedding. At a cost, not to see twenty thousand five hundred dollars. This is materials only, plus they keep five-year tax abatement and there's no charge for sewer water hookups.
Yeah, second, all right, now. Any discussion on the motion, but that, that, that was all we started. Any more discussion?
No. Did we say that when this came up initially, did we say that we wouldn't charge for the hookup?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anything else at this time? Take Robert.
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, all right, let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-two C day zero four three eight. It's the first reading of an ordinance accepting the donation of property for the Galena Dog Park in Temps subdivision phase two. And a motion on all the person.
I'll make a motion to um, approve the first reading of an ordinance accepting the donation of property for the Galena Dog Park in Temps subdivision phase two, which will lot eight and nine, three point two two acres. And it's, it has a value of sixty-seven thousand. We're accepting it as a value of sixty-seven thousand.
All right, then move them second, and I have number twenty-two C day zero four three eight, discussion. Great that Chris did that.
You got a dog.
Standard dog.
Yeah, my dog is excited.
Maybe yes.
Daisy and Michael enjoy it.
You shouldn't have told him, no, no.
You should have kept it as a.
Should have kept it as a surprise.
All right, anything else on that one? All right, take Robert, very best on that.
Yes.
McQuaid.
Yes.
Westman.
Yes.
Yes. Burnstein, yes, on.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Who had, I remember twenty-two C day zero four three nine, it's the first reading of an ordinance approving the purchase of real estate at four oh three South Main Street. First reading, if you want to wave the second, I think we could, so we mark or if we wanted to, whatever we want, all the person drinks.
Mr. Mayor, oh, we have approved the first reading and wait the second reading of an ordinance approving the purchase of real estate at four oh three South Main Street. Point two C zero four three nine.
Hey, wait a second. Okay, I just move the second, I have number twenty-two C day zero four three nine on that, uh, any discussion on this?
Uh, yeah, this is pretty much a no-brainer, it's, I think it's a great thing, it's going to provide more parking and firstly, I'd like to see public restaurants, I know we talked about tearing the building down, making parking, make it all park. But I think we should consider public restaurants.
It's good idea if we had somebody to help participate with putting them in the way of cost. Anyway, I, I, anything else on this? All right, take one.
Why?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-two C day zero four four zero. The first reading of an ordinance annexing three, three point one oh six acres of territory in West Galena Township, guys truck and tractor subdivision. I have a motion on that for a second, wave the second with all the Chris Pam.
Yes, I know we approved uh, the first reading of an ordinance annexing three point one oh six acres of territory in West Galena Township, guys truck and tractor subdivision. Item twenty-two C dash zero four four zero and wait for the second reading.
Okay, the new second on that, item number of twenty-two C day zero four four zero, uh, a discussion on the all right, take, we'll call on that, Mary.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Move ahead then, I have number twenty-two C day zero four four one. Discussion and possible action on the purchase of a new street sweeper for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. And most all put Bob.
Make a motion that we allow the action on the purchase of the new street sweeper for the fiscal year twenty-two hundred three twenty-four budget year. As the, from E J Equipment Chemical six hundred. At a cost with trade of two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Which includes a trade of, you know, one for thirty-six thousand, twenty-two C dash zero four four one.
Okay.
Okay, the move second on that number twenty-two C day zero four four one, um, a discussion on this, all the person.
Yeah, this um, apparently has a lot of bells and whistles on it that the other, the other um, sweepers don't have. And I'm just wondering if we made all the bells and whistles.
If you want to ride in the other street sweeper and wear headphones and have to stick your hands up there and get everything else out. You might want the bells and whistles.
The vibrator and stuff to get it up to like that. Plus, you know, with this company before and uh, they'll send a mechanic. Whenever, whenever it's.
That's true.
Instead of, that other company's not having a mechanic, they have to contract it out and probably be delays, you know, getting there or you get somebody.
Well, no, that if it need be, we haven't taken elsewhere. You know, we lost, we lost for a weekend.
And I, I mean, you can consider this bells and whistles, most of them are not bells and whistles. They are, the way it's built with the stainless steel camera to the pressure hoses, you know, divertible speed gutter room, you know, it's the dual skin on the body, it, it all enhances the operation of this machine over the other machines.
He doesn't deserve one of those.
Was it going to be fired, is that the one we've got now?
Yeah, probably not.
That thing came up behind me and certainly got my attention.
Yeah.
You can hear it.
Okay, anything else on the street sweeper? Take Robert.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-two C day zero four four two. Discussion and possible action on establishing the amount of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two tax levy for taxes to be collected in twenty twenty-three. I got motion. I'm losing my voice here for some reason.
I'll make a motion to us approve the amount of the twenty twenty-two tax levy for taxes to be collected in twenty twenty-three, that we freeze the tax amounts at, at the twenty twenty-two amount. That we, we freeze the tax. I'll second that.
We got to get them all in there.
One million five hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Four hundred and thirty-two. Correct mark on that, fifteen thousand, yeah, or one million five hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. So it's a freeze for that, like, okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, the move second on the, I have number uh, twenty-two C day zero four four two, discussion.
Mark. I think it's wonderful, we can pull this off at word of law, the levy rate appears to, you know, significantly so. appears to, you know, significantly so. I think it's, no, we aren't giving up. I want people to understand, we're giving up like eighty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine thousand dollars, you know, which would help pay for a few things along the way, so. Um, but, but I think the taxpayers are going to deserve this. Um, especially with the addition having the marijuana become a part of our environment, I think is a good deal.
And I agree with what you just said there, that as long as we can afford it, and we have it, we have helped with some raising the sewer and water rate, we absorb that cost also with garbage rate, we absorb that through the uh, grass tax. And I think with, if we can just keep bad times that's going on that frees the, the tax levy and like you said, you will freeze it, but it still drops to like, well, four or five cents. It's a great thing for the citizens of this town. Anybody else?
I think anytime we're able to freeze it or even lower, lower even more, we should. So I, I'm happy to give up the eighty-nine thousand dollars and like you said, we have other revenue streams that are generating more than eighty-nine thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, we just gotta be careful that, you know, what we do. I think just here, careful about.
I mean, I agree, and this does equate to approximately a savings of thirty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents for one hundred thousand dollars in home valuation, so. It's, it's something.
Yeah.
Well, and I agree, you know, not every year, maybe can we do this, but it's nice feeling good.
Yeah. We can help the taxpayers save a few bucks. I'm all for it. We'll look at it again next year, see what happens.
Like I said, I'm very much in favor of this, but I think it's good for everybody to understand by doing this, we lose this ninety thousand, not only this year, but we use it, we use it every year going forward. Here, because, because the, the state has a limit on how much we can increase this levy. So once this money's gone, it's gone. And also next year, we, we could and do what the state tells us we can do, but we've lost this going forward. So, I mean, this is, we're making a significant decision here and.
It certainly is, and I'll, I'll expound a little bit on that because we don't want to get to the point down the road where we might have to double our tax levy. You know.
So I gotta vote.
We gotta be careful what we're doing and when we do it. Okay, all right, anything else on that? Take the roll call, Mary Beth.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead to item number twenty-two C day zero four four three, the warrants, to have a motion in regards to the warrants. Or person Mark McCoy.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we pay our bills as per agenda item twenty-two C dash zero four four three.
Right, to have a second. All right, move second, to pay the bills. Any discussion on any of them? All right, take roll, Mary Beth.
I'm staying.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-two C day zero four four four, say all the persons comments, all the person Mark.
Enough has been said tonight, so no comment.
All right, all the person Bobby.
Why it's have run up the Halloween parade? How well that turned out, and I really gotta thank city staff, city employees, city employees' families, and everyone who helps put that together and clean it up. And as I understand, it was a unifying force of city employees, families and all, helping to put that on as well as the chamber. And I want to thank them all.
All right, Jerry.
Nothing good night, your honor.
Okay, all the person Katie.
Yeah, so I too had parade. I know there's a lot of work and planning and effort that went into it to show off our, our little city, two thousands and thousands of people, but thanks to everybody who made it happen. And then also, I don't think that we've actually brought it up, but I think the lights at the sludge barn look great. They're actually bright that you can actually see the parking lot, so I don't know if we can address some of the other dimly lit areas in town that were than before, but um, I know I was against spending money to paint down there, so I'll be happy to, to say it looks wonderful and love it.
Okay, thank you. All the person.
I'd like to say thank Walmart Yolks for for not a meal for the veterans over Veterans Day. And it was very well attended and nice gesture in their part.
Oh, is that the tree? Or a person. We had then item number twenty-two C day zero four four five, with city administrators report.
Just quickly, let me go and finish up the street paving for this year. So Indian Bridge is now done. Uh, South Hickory Street is completed, in case you didn't see that little stretch. Last week, we finished up with Brown Street and the dog park, parking lot, which is not really a street, I guess. And then all the water main breaks occurred this summer, those patches have been put in place. So thanks to Matt Holmberg, Engineering Department and the Water Department for coordinating all that. And I should mention also, West Street has been paved. And hopefully Dodge will be this week possibly, doesn't snow too much. Uh, also, the tax levy ordinance will be on the agenda next week, so we'll be able to formalize that tax freeze at that time. I would just say the dog park, I talk about this a lot, but it's really come together. If you hang it up there, heard you drive up, take a look at it, all the fencing is complete. Parking lot paved now, you can already see what this is gonna look like and have that open early next spring.
Are we gonna have some signs that show people how to get there? That would be good.
Yeah.
You know, I drove around a lot before. Actually found it.
Do you have the signs written?
Anything else? All right, let's move ahead to item number twenty-two C day zero four four six, mayor's report. I do wanna thank the whole, the whole city basically in regards to the parade, the chamber, Mark, the city staff, the city the public works, the police, the fire, and all the outside law enforcement area that came in here with their dogs and their planes and everything, and they have that many people in a small town and not that one. Things went very well, and I think everybody enjoyed themselves. So I think my thanks to everybody that was involved in that, that had it back. So saying that, let's, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Okay.
Move second to adjourn, take roll, Mary Beth.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are adjourned and thank you all.
Cold and snow. Because you can still drive, you know, walk on the sidewalks.